Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hello.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Someone can hear me?
I can hear you. This is Ray LaVoy.
Hey, Ray. I'm only whispering, that's cool.
Yeah, I know, I got my hearing aids all the way up.
Nice. Can you see me too?
I can see you, yes, you're in Mechanicall's room. Yeah, waving. I don't know why my picture's not coming up.
What did you say?
I'm not sure why my picture is not coming up.
I can't hear you because the volume over there needs to be turned up.
On my end?
No, I think we need to do it, but I don't know, I'll check with Zach.
Okay.
Out there?
Still here.
Can you hear me?
I'm gonna turn you up, I think. Can you talk a little bit, like recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay. Yeah, that's good, thanks.
Hey, Gil, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, I'm just wanting to check some volume levels for the people in the room. Can someone in the planning board room unmute and let me know how that volume works?
That sounds good to me.
Thank you, sir.
Oh.
Hey, Gil, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, I'm just wanting to check some volume levels for the people in the room. Can someone in the planning board room unmute and let me know how that volume works?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, sir.
You get me?
Gil and Shelley. Anything comes up, let me know.
Thank you.
Oh, you're gonna be picturing all those too? Oh, that's cool. Then you tell me that.
Third year.
How does that do?
People with little kids love it. We had three ladies out there, they were class. They were pretty middle-aged. And they were out, they're giggling, they're laughing, they're picking potatoes. It was hilarious to watch. A lot of parents with kids, like, they're beautiful.
Like treasure.
Oh, yeah.
Where are you moving on?
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 Hey Gil, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. I'm just wanting to check some volume levels for the people in the room. Can someone in the planning board room unmute and let me know how that volume works?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Thank you, sir.
You get me?
Gil and Shelley. Anything comes up, let me know.
Thank you.
Oh, you're gonna be pictured on all those too? Oh, that's cool. Then you tell me that. How does that do?
People with little kids love it. We had three ladies out there. They were classed. Running, they were pretty middle-aged and they were out there giggling and laughing and digging potatoes. It was hilarious to watch. But a lot of parents with kids, like they're beautiful.
Like treasure.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the other Jeremy.
Yeah, that'd be good if he moved over. Yep, push the green button.
Set to go. Well, six thirty-two this evening. All the meeting to order. Stand. Welcome, everybody, including people out in cyber world. We have on our agenda is the solar farm that's going on Route eleven. Right now, I'll have Julie do a roll call so that everybody understands who's here. Could you do it so that everybody will understand? It'll be voice recorded. Lou, can we start with you? Lou Anans?
President.
Walter?
Walter Goss.
Luguay?
Paulus Goss, President.
Horace Martin.
Basquen.
Alan Plummer.
And I believe Paula Boldick is on the tube. Okay. Good. Minutes from last meeting.
We don't have those only because we've had a little bit of an increase in business here at the counter and they haven't gotten done yet.
Okay, so.
We'll approve those next time.
Take a motion to table into next meeting.
My motion that we table the minute approval for May eighteenth, twenty twenty.
All in favor? Yes. Now, Walter. This is your time. Okay. It is noted as such. And I believe the first thing we're gonna do is Shelley or NextGrid. It's gonna.
Shelley, do you wanna just talk? Can you hear me, Shelley? Okay?
Yes, I can.
You wanna just talk briefly about what you've got? We got, we got some information from NextGrid today, but it was a little bit late in the day. So Shelley, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just run through what's changed since the last meeting in terms of our checklist. So items that have changed include number twenty-three. Write title or interest in the property. We did receive today the agreement with NextGrid and with Mr. and Mrs. Goss, so we do have that information for those parcels for this project. Item number thirty-four on the checklist under proposed conditions has to do with location of buffers. And it was my sense from the last meeting that the board was satisfied with the buffering that's been proposed with this project, so I changed that to a yes. And if, if I'm wrong in any of this, feel free to stop me, board members, or discuss it afterwards. Item number thirty-nine, I changed to not applicable. That had to do with signs. While there will be some signage on site, it sounds like it will be small signs on the fence or even signs within the project site dealing with emergency services information, so it's really not probably applicable to the sign, you know, part of the ordinance that deals with signs normally that would be on the roadside. Item number forty-one. I identified as, as being a yes that we have that information now. That's proposed landscaping and buffering. A landscaping plan has been submitted by the applicant. Item number.
Is there any details on that, Shelley? On the landscaping plan? Other than what they've submitted to you? Is it planning of everybody's bushes to just hide what's there or is it to?
So it's primarily planting along Timber Lane for the buffering with the neighbors. There isn't planting proposed between the project and Route eleven. I don't believe, Gil, you can, it's been a little while.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, no, and, and the landscape plan was based on the feedback we got way back, it seems, before this COVID hit when we had a public informational meeting and got feedback from, you know, those that lived on Timber Lane. And so I feel like we, we were able to address their concerns.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Item number forty-four, which has to do with waiver of performance standards. There was some, there had been something in the applicant's comments that had flagged that for me as a question to the applicant. That's been resolved, so that's not applicable. None have been requested by the applicant. Item number forty-nine, again, has to do with the planting schedule and, and landscape design, and that has been provided. That's a yes. And those are the changes. The items that are still outstanding are generally items that the applicant has requested to be provided at a later date. They either have to do with stamping of the drawings, bearings and distances from the surveyor, erosion control design, stormwater design, things like that. So, so just wanna run through the checklist. There have been a few. Sorry?
There's a question.
I have a question. Yeah, at the last meeting, we had an issue with where it was gonna cut in. And we were to Elm Street and then we pulled over to Dusty and then we're back to Elm Street. Do you have a layout of where on Elm Street that's gonna be?
That's in the packet that you picked up at the table. Yep, you can see that now. And that's gonna be towards the, towards the back of the packet.
Should I share my screen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because I, I've got it up here. Let me know when you can see it. So this, um, this property here is owned by Mr. Goss.
I can't, oh, you can see it over there. Gotcha. Go ahead, sorry.
Should I, okay. So what we determined was that there's a tiny, tiny strip of land here that's owned by the person that owns this parcel here. So this, this parcel here, there is a residence here and then it comes down and it's ever so small, but nonetheless, it is there. We recognize that. I asked my surveyor to review it for me to see if perhaps there was an error in the drawing or if indeed there was a strip that was retained and indeed there is a strip. So we went back to Mr. Goss and asked him, you know, well, apprised him of this particular issue and then said, well, we'd like to come in on, off Elm Street because the original proposal would have been disruptive to his, his U-PIC. Is U-PIC enterprise in this area, so we're gonna avoid that by coming in off Elm Street off of this land that he recently purchased. We hug that property line. We hug this, maintain fifty-foot offset. We maintain a fifty-foot offset here and then, and then enter the, the solar array right in here. So this is the new layout, which is, it's not that much different than the one that was recently presented where we came off of Dusty. Instead of coming off of Dusty where that hammerhead is, we are now doing this here. Is that a question?
Are they, are they leasing that shit or are they purchasing it from, I said the lease agreement that I purchased?
It's a lease agreement. Yep.
The town did agree, get a copy of that agreement today.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think there were a few things that we were working towards based on our last meeting. One was to finalize the access to this part of the array and everybody knows this part of the array, we're accessing off Route eleven. And this part, the eastern part, we're accessing off of Elm Street now. That was, there was a couple of things that were, that were, that we discussed last time that were needed. One was the sign copy agreement. One was, you know, final layout of this road. We had to check on, make sure that we had coverage with, with respect to Maine Historic Preservation Commission and in the Fisheries and Wildlife Natural Areas regarding cultural resources and rare animals and rare plants respectively. So we, we do have that information that shows that we're not going to be impacting any of those resources. And, and then lastly was just some calculations that we provided today with this, with this new layout.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so we went a little bit out of order, but I'm, I think that's okay. We haven't done the public hearing, but I would like to do that, so it gave a little bit of a introduction. For those of you who haven't heard about the project, you get a little bit of information, but we could probably go to public hearing and see if anyone has any questions before. So I went, I went out of order, but.
You want me to keep this up or stop sharing? Because we may have some other questions that in public hearing, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll open it up to questions from the public.
So we need to be official about that and open the time for, like, public hearing.
Any abutting neighbors to this project will have two minutes to share anything at this point in time. I stress abutters. So you're on.
Anybody out there in video land? Did you mark the time down for?
So if there is anybody on the call who is looking to be unmuted, if you're on video, you can either wave or raise your virtual hand.
I can tell you what I did get for calls. So I've had several calls from abutters that got notices. I was able to answer all their questions. A couple of people I suggested they, they show up tonight virtually and ask, ask further questions if they had them. Basically, they're about vegetation and, and screening and what the fence is gonna look like. What are they gonna look like? What, what's it gonna look like when they, when the, when the farm is up? So I answered those questions. They weren't very complicated. Some people just called to get notice as to where the fields are gonna be located. We notified everyone within five hundred feet of any part of the project at all, even if it's the corner of it. So some people weren't, aren't really gonna be affected at all. They'll, I won't even know what's going on. Especially since we're coming in from the opposite side. The calls I got were from Route eleven people.
And from what my understanding is from reading literature is there's gonna be a fence that's gonna be put up with green implants in it that, so it looks green. And they're gonna put some vegetation now of some sort along, was that Timber Lane? On the backside of that. And you really don't see this project from the road, do we? From Route eleven?
No, you don't see it at all. You, uh, the property slopes back down to the old railroad bed. This is Ray LaVoix speaking, by the way.
Yes.
Yep, the project, the high point is actually Route eleven. Alright, so then there's a burn. There is a hogback burn of sand that, that's going to remain between Route eleven and the, the solar panels. So that blocks, that's a natural block in and of itself. And the piece of land is actually heavily forested already, so we're planning on leaving a fifty-foot buffer along the Timber Lane subdivision and along the, the old Crane property. So it's, it's going to have some natural growth already there. So the fencing is, it's a low fencing. The panels are relatively low. And with that burn in place, that's going to hide much of the project from the Route eleven side.
Yeah, the fencing is primarily to keep people out so they don't play.
End game, end game, end game, because we have deer that run through there all the time.
Are there any comments from any of others? Last call. Alright, comments from the general public, brief, less than a minute, please, on each comment. Unless we find a source to be debated here on the planning board, then we will take it up and debate that along with you. So, general public.
Anybody out there that wants to be unmuted to make a comment or question? Anything, Zach?
Nope, no hands. Everybody has the ability to unmute themselves if they would like.
Okay. Um, can we take a, why, can I get a motion? Take a five-minute recess for a second? I have duties that need to be done.
Of course you can.
Oh, the back, yeah. I make a motion, we take a five-minute break.
Just don't take your microphone with you.
Yeah. Oh, we'll be back in five minutes. You want that?
I don't know, but holy shit, are they in deep in the car or what? Yeah. I mean, I just seen these, I don't know. It's a trash on, you know, up, up in there. And left it, we, we buying, mine, by the side.
Really?
I was, I don't know who it was or when they did it. The water sits inside those frigging. Yeah, isn't that great? Yeah, because we don't have that.
Hey Louis, what's the scoop with, there's nails still on there or the trail used to go us by your house? Who owns that now?
Roxas got it.
So I saw, that's a trespassing, this and that.
Yeah, they closed everything.
I mean, I don't blame her, but I used to take a loop from my house, go by the back of her house, pull the hell all the way to Twenty-S sixth and come, you know, walk on that, walk, ride with her. Oh, shit. I may stop and see if she cares or somebody just walks or what? What she can say is no, right? Yes, she does, although you get one, get out of free jail. You ask it, you don't get anymore.
You do what I told you, Dad. We come out Sunday morning and found a trash bag full of trash piled up my.
Call the meeting back to order at six fifty-four. If I don't hear anybody on the planning board that has any objections, we're gonna go through this land zoning and land use checklist with Shelley. How are you doing, young man? He on or wanna ask a question? Oh, Ray, hi, Ray. Is, can we get Shelley then?
I'm here.
Okay, Shelley, we're gonna go through this. We got one here that says revised six-three twenty-twenty. Is that correct? Okay, Shelley, we're going to go through this. We got one here that says, uh, it's revised 6-3-2020. Is that the correct one that you're working off of?
Yes.
We're going to go through this on each and every line and item that's here. Uh, and discuss that. If we have any questions, feel free to answer those for us.
Do you want me to go through it line by line, or is the board going to do that?
Uh, the board is actually going to do that.
Okay.
We're going to go through and there's, you said there's three, uh, items that aren't, uh, that are pending right now and some other stuff from, uh, DEP and I believe some, uh, land issues, uh, that need, he needs permits or he mentioned that.
Um, uh, just a clarification on that. As far as the checklist goes, the items that are outstanding, I can highlight those. But, uh, permits are items that will be, could be part of a, um, conditions of approval if the board wanted to, to make an approval. Um, so they're, they've either, uh, applied for permits, although in the case of their wetland filling permits, they'll need to get adjustments to those because they're now filling additional wetlands. Um, and they still will need their DOT permit and they'll still need a driveway entrance permit from the town. Um, but those are things that could be part of a condition of approval.
Okay, that's good to hear. Um. Alright Shelley, what, you put this together. Maybe I should let you go through it and if the board has any, any questions we can ask. Um, I'm new to the process and it'd probably be better you to do that.
Sure. Um, so the checklist starts on page seven. Um, so if everyone has that in front of them, um, it starts with.
I just printed out just the checklist itself.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Um, does it have a seven on the bottom or?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So page seven, you just don't, aren't seeing pages one through six, that's why. So the, uh, the first section, application requirements, is a list of, um, basic, uh, administrative issues. So, um, the first few have to do with submitting the application, paying necessary fees. Having a public hearing. And so forth. So items one through six, um, have either been addressed, or in the case of item five, no studies have been requested by the board, so that's not applicable. We can add the public hearing to number six. Um, there was one on May 18th, but there's also been one tonight, so we can add that date. Um, item number seven is one which the applicant, um, has provided some information already, but, uh, a condition of approval has been suggested, which would be that there be, um, some sort of a performance bond or something, put in place to guarantee that construction costs or removal costs won't fall to the town. Um, so that would be pa- part of a condition of approval and that is listed, um, as a potential condition later on. Item number eight, there was an issue that was raised at the last meeting about the application. I believe Paula, you had a concern about item 52, um, being, or 25 was incorrectly answered. And in this case, there are some lots that are being developed, um, that the application doesn't mention. Um, so that still was a outstanding issue. The next section of the checklist looks at the site inventory and environmental assessment, which is a standard part of your, um, major development review. Uh, so this is just a additional list of materials to be included. The applicant has included all of those, so that is items number nine through 14. Moving to the next section, uh, which has to do with the formal development review application itself. This is, uh, still, some of it's fairly, um, administrative, so providing numbers of copies of, um, the application of the drawings. Owners of, uh, record, um, name of the development, the, those who reside within 500 feet. I believe the town ended up providing some of that for the applicant. Um, in the second half of this, as the, the list kept changing based on the design change, location map. And then the property adjacent that the owner has control over. So items 15 through 22 are listed as yeses, that those have been provided. Um, item 23, I mentioned earlier this evening, had been a no, and that's what it looks like on your application, uh, or on your form. Um, but we did receive that today. Um, the second half, we already had the, uh, agreement with the LaJoy's, but we now have it with the Gosses. Item number 24 is something that the applicant has requested to provide to the town later. Um, so normally, we would be looking to see the surveyor or engineers, um, you know, main stamp. Um, and so they're asking to stamp those drawings when they provide a final construction set to the town in the fall. Um, and, and to the planning board for a review. Item number 25, similarly, the applicant has requested to provide that at a later date as part of the survey, um, which would be prepared as part of their construction drawing set. Um, so sorry, we moved into existing conditions here. Um, item 26, uh, there are no, uh, known existing sewer water mains or other drains on the property, so that's not applicable. Number 27, the applicant has included listing of low, you know, streets in the area on their plans, so that's a yes. Item number 28 is not applicable because there are no existing buildings involved with this project. Similarly, items 29, 30, also deal with things, um, that, well, in, I guess in the case, sorry, in the case of 29, there, there may be some driveways nearby, if there are driveways located nearby, they've been shown on the plans. Otherwise, it's not applicable because there's no parking and loading and other existing, um, construction on site. And no, um, uh, item 30, intersecting roads and driveways within 200 feet have been shown. Item 31, existing drainage courses, um, trees, wetlands, natural features have been shown on the drawings. Item 32 is not applicable. There are no signs on site currently. Item 33 has to do with existing easements and, uh, covenants and right-of-way, and there's not known to be any, so that's not applicable. Regarding proposed conditions, starting with item 34, um, I've listed that as a yes because they have provided, um, a landscaping plan that shows buffers. Uh, and there are no proposed buildings, um, or, or building setbacks that need to be shown. Item 35, uh, deals again with proposed buildings, so that's not applicable. Item 36 looks at proposed roads and driveways and parking areas. Those have been shown on the drawings. 37, uh, looks at water supply and wastewater disposal. In both cases, the applicant has no plans to have those on site, so that's not applicable. 38 is part of the stormwater, um, design. And the applicant has requested to provide that at a later date. 39, I've listed as not applicable. Uh, that's proposed signs. It doesn't appear that there will be any near the roads. Any signage will be, um, either on the fence or, or within the fence. 40 also not applicable. No proposed lighting will be on site. 41, um, has been included. That's landscaping, uh, design, um, has been included. 42 has to do with applicable state applications and permits. That's listed as a no. The applicant has provided their Army Corps of Engineering permit and their main DEP permits for wetland filling, but they still need a main DOT permit for, um, or at least need to verify with main DOT if the permit that was provided years ago is still, um, in effect. There is, are changes now. Um, as of today, the new design shows additional wetland filling, about 0.2 acres. So the applicant will need to revisit those permits with DEP and Army Corps to verify that there are no changes to those. So that should be a condition, um, if the board does make approval, that, uh, any changes to permits be supplied to the board as well as, uh, any permits that haven't been applied for would be supplied to the town prior to construction. Um, and 43, we do have a schedule, um, of the, with the beginning and completion dates that are anticipated. Next, we get to additional requirements that the ordinance has for major developments. Uh, looking at that, 44 I listed as not applicable because the board, uh, the applicant has not requested any waivers. Uh, 45 and 46 both are related to the stormwater design. Um, the 45 is the grading design, so the actual topography. And 46 looks at, um, the runoff and what sort of stormwater treatment would be required. Those both the applicant has requested to provide, um, at a later date when they're preparing more detailed construction documentation. 47 is a groundwater impact analysis. This is not required because this is not located in an aquifer management district and it does not involve a common water supply. 48, a utility plan has been provided with this documentation. They do show where the electrical, um, connections would be on site, um, at least in a cursory way. It'd be more detailed when they get closer to construction. 49, um, planting design has been provided. 50, uh, has to do with, um, waste disposal. And after construction, there isn't anticipated to be any. It said that was not applicable, but I guess I would say instead I might change that to yes because the applicant does intend to have a waste management company with dumpsters who would be removing, um, waste during construction, so we can change that.
But that would be a temporary, that would be temporary under the construction of the, the site. It's not going to be retained there permanently.
Right. So if the board is more comfortable with it, we could say not applicable. I think you could go either way with that.
My question is, there will be any waste that we can go in and do repairs and stuff that we can take from others as well?
It's a good question. Maybe the applicant can address whether the intent is to have dumpsters there permanently that are periodically, um, materials are taken away, or whether it's just during construction. I guess that wasn't a hundred percent.
I think I want to ask that question to him right now. And he can answer that. Can he go, can he come back?
It would be just during construction.
Yeah, you shouldn't have any waste or anything that's applicable. You're going to have solar panels and pipes coming up out of the ground. You're going to mow the lawn, right?
Yep, that's, that's correct.
Well, with any waste that may come from having to do any repairs from storm damage, but will it be carry and carry out?
Well, yeah, it would be carry and carry out. That would be like replacing a bad panel, that sort of thing. Um, so that the bad panel gets removed. And then the new panel gets installed and the ba- the bad panel gets taken off site and, and recycled.
Thank you.
Would the board like to call that not applicable, or would you like to say, yes, the information has been provided?
I think the information has been provided. And once his construction is done, he's not going to have a dumpster on site at that point.
Okay.
And I don't think this site's going to use the landfill at all.
No, it, the, um, you, you know, it'd be one of the, uh, major vendors that would have dumpsters there. What can be recycled will be recycled and then any waste would be hauled off to, oh, I can't remember the name now. It's, um, over in Portland. Eco, Eco Maine, Eco Maine.
Yeah.
Or Westbrook, Westbrook or Portland, sorry.
Once construction's done and you walk out of there with the book complete, there will be no dumpster left.
Right, right. No, those would be the rental dumpsters that the, uh, the waste, um, you know, transfer provider would, would have on site. And then once the project is, uh, constructed, then they all get removed.
Okay, so I think I would just change it from not applicable to yes, but the comment I have there, no waste generation is anticipated after construction would still apply. Unless the board has changes to that.
Yeah, good for them, good.
And item 51, traffic impact analysis. Um, I've listed that as not applicable. The board hasn't asked for it and the proposal is for a project which once constructed has no occupancy, so there would be no traffic generated except, you know, some during construction. Item 52 has to do with street utility and stormwater construction drawings. Um, we have street and utility. At this point in time, the stormwater is still to be designed. And that's part of what the applicant has asked to provide at a later date. Item 53 is common or public ways and open spaces, which is not applicable. They're not proposing to develop any. And item 454, covenants and deed restrictions, again, not applicable. There's none proposed with this project. Number 55, dedication of or conveyance of land to the town is again not applicable. That's not proposed with this project. Uh, item 56, evidence of adequate provision or maintenance of the development. The applicant has provided an operations and maintenance plan, so, um, I've listed that as yes. Item 57, cost estimates of proposed development and evidence of financial capacity to comp- complete it. Um, the applicant has provided quite a bit of information on this, providing, uh, a cost for it, um, and information on, um, a company that they're partnering with who's purchasing their projects. But again, there is a condition of approval about that, so I've, I've listed that as no, um, that there would be a condition required. Item 58, description of how the proposal relates to the site inventory and environmental assessment. Um, the code officer has reviewed this and determined that the site inventory and environmental assessment requirements have been met. So they don't need to provide additional information, so I've listed that as not applicable. Moving into the approval criteria, um, in this category, the question of yes or no, um, isn't so much about whether, uh, something is sufficient or not. It's, it's whether sufficient information has been provided for the board to make a decision. So, um, have they provided enough information for the board to determine undue adverse effect on scenic or natural beauty? Number 59, yes. Um, so number 60 is conformance of the comprehensive plan and other municipal ordinances, yes. 61, unreasonable soil erosion or reduction of land's capacity to hold water, I said yes. 62, financial burden to the town. Um, I've said yes, but also noted here that it's recommended so that there isn't additional burden to the town, that there would be the condition of approval for a bond or, um, you know, anything if, if construction is halted partway through, um, to help return the site to its natural condition. Item 63, adequate financial and technical capacity. Um, I've listed that as no, um, in that there would be a condition of approval related to that. Now that I'm looking at it, the one above, we have a condition of approval for as well. So to be consistent, we should probably list that as no.
Which one was that again, Shelley?
Sixty-two, financial burden to the town. I don't know how the board wants to treat that when we're looking at, we would probably need a condition of approval. Do you still think sufficient information has been provided? So we could say yes for both of those, but still be noting that there would be a condition.
So a question, have they provided you with a fine problem for starting this project?
Alan, can you repeat the question? I have trouble hearing Paula because of the distance from the microphone.
Bring it down, there you go.
Have they provided to you proof of financial stability for doing this particular project?
They've provided information about their company and they have an agreement with a company that has a $250 operational fund. I'm sorry, 200, 250 million dollars, sorry, whole different, to purchase all of their renewable energy projects. That's the, what we've been provided for financials. I'm not sure if, if the board would wish something additional, but that's, that's what they have given us.
If you don't mind me asking, what, mine is going through this as we are. Are they still going through this process over in mine it?
I don't know what mine has to do with the project we have going here.
Did they provide anything in particular to mine that they've not provided to us?
No, they provided the same information. It's the same developer, they provided the same information. Okay. It's a mine it.
And mine it was approved. Mine had approved the project last week.
Lou, you had, I have a couple of questions.
Just want to talk right into the microphone.
First is, will there be any heavy equipment on Timber Lane to access the property for construction? And by heavy equipment, I'm, I'm thinking equipment that could cause damage to Timber Lane, which in turn would create a financial burden on the town mechanical.
No, there won't be any access on Timber Lane. It's right off Route eleven where the, where you see the access road shown on the plan. That's, that's how the property will be accessed.
Okay.
Was there another question from the board?
For me?
Okay. Moving on then to item sixty-four. If the project is in a flood prone area and we do have sufficient information to, to determine that, mapping of freshwater wetlands, we have that information. Quality or quantity of groundwater. I, I think we have sufficient information to determine that, especially since the project doesn't have a lot of impact on groundwater. Burden on municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste. We do have sufficient information on that. Burden on existing water supply, we have sufficient information on that. Compatible to the character of the neighborhood, noise, privacy, safe and helpful conditions. We have sufficient information. Will not result in undue water or air pollution. I believe we have sufficient information, but that one might be a little more subjective. Mapping of existing river stream or brook. We have sufficient information that has been provided. Sewerage disposal, we do have that, as there isn't any, there's sufficient information. Adequate stormwater management, I think that's still to be determined. That's why I've put no, that would really be part of potentially a future review by the town once we do have a stormwater design that's been prepared. Item seventy-four, sufficient water available. I believe we have enough information for that. Will not cause highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions. It seems like we have enough information for that, although I am a little curious and the board maybe as well. As far as construction, what type of construction vehicles and frequency we might be expecting for that? I think that might help with any questions we have on, on the final documentation for, for traffic concerns. Gil, is that something you can address?
Sure. Well, like during the clearing aspects of the project, there'll be, you know, logging equipment, you know, fell a buncher, you know, log trucks hauling off logs, you know, that sort of thing. That's, that's during the clearing process. And then for the most part, you'll have pickups, but you will have, you know, some self loaders coming in to offload the panels and the racking and so forth. So not a, not a, not a lot of equipment like you'd see in the subdivision, you know, that sort of thing. But, you know, certainly there will be heavy equipment, especially as it relates to the construction, the clearing aspect of the project.
Gil, what, what about the stumpage on that, once they're done clearing property?
You mean the stumps themselves or stumpage in terms of the value of?
No, 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 stumps themselves, they're going to be ground into the ground and used as.
They'll probably be, they could be used as ECM erosion control mix on site. So typically they'll take the stuff, the stumps and put them in a tub grinder. And then they use, you know, what we call erosion control mix, which is basically stump grindings. And that's in lieu of like using silk fence or hay bales. And the DEP actually prefers that, that approach. So it'd be encouraged to, to grind the stumps on site. Either that or, or they'd be hauled away. But nowadays, you know, a lot of these companies use these grinders right on site.
It's called erosion mulch. You know, it's, I, I do an awful lot of construction work and we use those to make erosion berms for our, our sediment and our water, wastewater and stormwater controls. So that's the best use of that product.
Gil, I have a question with the construction equipment. Do they typically bring everything in at once? Or do, are there going to be periodic dumps of, of panels and things like that? Is it going to be, so is it going to be regular, ongoing throughout the construction process? Or do they bring a bunch of stuff all at one time? Drop it, people do the work, they bring another bunch, drop it.
Yeah, the latter, bringing in bunches, yeah. Yeah, so not like a pickup truck loader at a time or something, but, you know, bringing in a substantial amount of panels so that, you know, they continue their work. And then, you know, so sort of incrementally bringing in the product, which includes, you know, mostly it's the racking and the, and the panels. I mean, it's racking, which is, you know, steel or aluminum, the panels and then the wiring. Those are sort of the big delivery items.
It was not really going to be day after day after day, construction equipment going through that road.
Just the pickup trucks coming in, you know, the men working on the project. I know that was sexist, the people working on the project, sorry.
Guys, if I could interject something here for traffic control, that, that street entrance permit that we got from the main DOT, that, that meets all sight line criteria for the 50 mile an hour speed limit. So you want to remember that, that we do have a valid permit in place for that street entrance located right next to my house.
Other questions from the board before we finish up the checklist?
Any more question? You out there, Paula? Any questions from you? No, go ahead, Shelley.
Okay. Item seventy-six, adequate water supply for firefighting purposes. I, I think we have sufficient information to determine that. Item seventy-seven, performance guarantee if required. So that is recommended as a condition of approval and we do have language for that. And then finally, there are some additional performance requirements and standards in your ordinance. And there is one that potentially applies to this project having to do with shoreline overlay district. And so that appears to have been met, so I have that as a yes. So that's the checklist.
Questions? Knock boxes are being requested by both the fire department and the police department. I didn't see them anywhere in either of these documents. Where would you put that?
I would imagine they would put them right on the fence right by the gate.
No, no, in this to make sure that they are a part of this project. The application says nothing about the knock boxes and her check off list says nothing about knock boxes.
It was in the, it was on the list you had earlier, Shelley. I read that one this morning.
It's, it's on the recommended conditions of approval that there be knocks boxes. I think it may also have been earlier in this review where I do talk about safety. Yeah, so I do say the fire department was consulted and they requested knocks boxes on site.
Yeah, and we'll be providing those. That's, that's standard.
I just have it in the conditions of approval because I don't see them on the plans at this time. But I imagine they will show up with the more final plans that you would see in the future.
Correct, yep.
That's why I was asking, because under the proposed conditions list, this updated one, I do not see them listed.
What are, can you tell us what document you're looking at, Paula?
Page nine.
Is that the one I gave, sent you today or?
Yeah.
Proposed conditions. So what you're looking at here, Paula, are the ordinance requirements, which is why they're showing up on a checklist. So these are essentially, if you're reading through the ordinance through a site plan review, these are the things listed that need to happen. It doesn't mean that there aren't additional things like that the fire department have identified. It just means they aren't part of this checklist because this checklist was meant to follow the ordinance lockstep.
I, I will add too, that on the site plans provided, there, note eleven is a knocks, a knocks box shall be installed at each solar array entrance. That's in the notes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Is that the, is that the notes that you provided? Those, those are the notes that are, most of them look like there are conditions of approve, of proposed anyway, the condition.
Correct.
That are proposed. So those are on the plans you provided today.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we modeled that after, you know, of course, we've asked similar requests from the other towns that we've received permits. And I think all of the towns requested, you know, a, a list of these types of notes to be on the plans. So when you look at those general notes, you'll see, you know, a number of different things like, you know, stormwater and, you know, knocks box and number of different things.
Would have any discussion about any of this or any questions about any of this?
I have a question of Shelley. Shelley, out of these items, are there, is there anything that stands out that we don't have tonight that you feel we should have before making a decision? She's, I want to know from her because she's very.
She's really involved.
Involved in the program.
That was one of my questions as well.
I think at this point, so long as we, it would be a condition of approval. Anything that's missing, the real critical things like knowing that the owners of the land have given approval, the, the basic information that has to be provided. Some of these other items, it's fairly common for communities to make a condition of approval on receiving all necessary permits. It's, usually you don't hold up the process for all the permits, unless there's something like a significant DEP permit, if it's going through site location review. But, and, and then similarly, the, the requests that the applicant has made about doing a more detailed design at a later date, I think that's a discussion for the board, but if the board is comfortable with that, then, you know, there's a number of items that have been listed as potential conditions of approval that would address that. And really the question for the board, my reading of the ordinance would be that design, like design changes to the drawings, the stormwater design and so forth, which should come back to the board. Whereas the review of whether permits have been applied for and received is something that would be something the code officer could do. But each town does that a little differently. So I think that's up to the board to decide how it wants to handle that.
A question, it would be appropriate if they provided, once they got their condition and submitted great, the grain order or the layout, if they decided again, after they got the condition, if they're moving things around again, then they would have to come back to them.
I'm sorry, that was kind of garbled and in and out.
If they submit, let me see.
Yeah, go ahead.
If they submit, if they have a plan in place, it's been approved and they get down the road and, and something comes up and have to change it, would that have to come back to the planning board?
Yeah, so I think that that's something for the planning board to decide normally. It kind of depends on how significant a change it might be. So for example, what I've proposed for language as a condition of approval, it's number two. If any of the supporting data or representations for which the approval is based changes or is found to be inaccurate, the applicant should request or shall request in writing from the planning board a decision as to what impacts those changes will have on the approval. So let's say the applicant decides that their road is going to move 20 feet to the east because of some issue. If, if, if that sort of level of change is something that the planning board doesn't feel it needs to see, then they could let the applicant know that. And that could just be something that, you know, code officer would review and say, yep, that looks fine to me. Whereas there may be a more significant changes that the board would want to see before it. So I think this language allows the applicant to request that determination from the board. You know, kind of, they, they can even do that without anything on paper yet. It can really just be a letter saying, hey, we've just heard, you know, there's this change that we need to make. How, how does the town want to proceed? And then Alan can bring it to the planning board for a determination, whether it comes to the board or not.
Okay, Gil, do you see any or foresee any changes in the plan whatsoever? Or where the array is going to be?
No, not at this point, especially given the number of iterations we've gone through.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, no, we, we're exhausted on iterations. Or at least my engineer is, so she'll kill me if we do more changes. But that's, that's my battle, I guess. But no, I think, you know, it's, it's been a little bit more dynamic. But, you know, because of the access road, we really had to, to kind of make changes in order to, to make sure that Mr. Goss and Mrs. Goss were, were happy with the alignment. in order to, to make sure that Mr. Goss and Mrs. Goss were, were happy with the alignment. You know, the attempt to do that was thwarted by this little strip of land that was, that we noticed, and I'm glad we did notice it because we might be having a different discussion tonight if we wouldn't have picked that up. And then, you know, lastly, the, the change, you know, to, to come in off Elm Street. So, you know, but, but it, and, and I apologize, it did take, you know, longer than expected, wanted to get these out last week to you all. But, um, you know, we have been diligent in our efforts in making sure that, that we don't have another change again. And hence, you know, the package being delivered today, but, you know, it's part of our due diligence and quality control to ensure that we don't have any other changes.
Thank you.
I just have one thing. I don't, I don't see the, the new road access, the entry of that in this packet. It came in, it ca, I have it, it must not have printed. So before you leave or, or now if you want, but you saw it on the screen, I think. It's, it's right beside that other, the other road there. And I had, and I did have Scott Penny look at that today and he has no problem with it. There's plenty of line of sight there for the road and he felt good about that. So I'll, I'll print out that one page. It must not have.
It won't affect public works in any way.
He said, it's fine.
Shelley?
Yes.
How would we go about with all these conditions, making a proposal for that this evening? For this planning board to at least give them the opportunity to stop moving forward in the way they need to finish this project and bring it here?
Yeah, it's a good question. So what I've prepared, I had prepared a second document for the board previously and then updated it the end of last week, which is the draft findings of fact and conclusions of law. So because the state law court has stated that when a code officer or board acts on an application or permit request, there should be findings of fact and conclusions of law. They did prepare this for the board.
Shelley, I didn't, I didn't do that. I didn't print that out. So that was in the packet I sent to you. So I mailed it, but I didn't print it out for this meeting. Can you show that on your screen? If you're going to go walk through that? I don't know if you're.
I don't know if I am either. So let me chat with the board a little longer and we'll find out. So the, 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 I don't know if it's a difficulty or not, but the challenge with that is that because materials were received this afternoon at two o'clock, what I've had a chance to do is go through and identify things that would need to be adjusted. But I haven't done it yet. And so it varies in community, to community, how boards work with this document. Some, you would, you know, potentially discuss it tonight. We'd make changes. Some boards would actually go through the changes at the next meeting and would review them. Others would have their chairman look it over and say, yeah, it looks okay and sign it. It really varies. The changes that would need to happen, I can classify for the board as really just a few, but they happen quite a few times. So I, I referenced Dosty Drive, which as you now know, is no longer the way that they're accessing the site. It's coming off of Elm Street. I reference the amount of wetland disturbance, which has increased now because the road access that comes off of Elm Street is routed differently and, and they're now showing on their plan additional wetland filling that's necessary. The length of the gravel roads that are proposed, I've noted and that number has changed. So those are sort of some of the basic types of information that's changed. In addition, I note on what dates the board received additional information and now we've received the agreement with the Gosses and the new drawing set with today's date. So that would need to be added as well to the, to the record. The, you know, substantive changes in terms of a number of these items, kind of the, what the review criteria is and then how it's being addressed are no, are no different. Nor, nor are the conditions of approval that are suggested. So the board could go through this evening and we could notate some of those changes. I could also prepare those changes and send them to the board or the chairman for review and signature after the fact. So some different options for how the board might proceed.
Well, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but you know, it's, I've always been a person who wants the alternative forms of energy because it's a renewable source that's here. And this one's in our community and with everything going on, there's no telling that this may be our only lights that go on at some point. You don't know what the future is going to bring. I'd like to move forward, but I don't know how the rest of the board would feel about that. And being the chair, I can't make any motions.
I would request if we could work through this this evening. We really appreciate it because the PUC deadline is June 11th. So if, if we don't get a decision this evening, then this, this project can, could kind of go away.
Shelley, is there any way you can back to the town office or to Mr. Forrester, the information that you have as far as like gravel changes water and that kind of stuff so that we can see them?
Well, I think what you said, Shelley, I think she said that the, the things that she needs to change are rudimentary changes that she, she had specified something like the, like the road and now she needs to take that out. But the substantive information in her packet, her fact finding is, is there. It's done. So I don't think we have to be concerned with that. And you could make, make a motion to approve on condition of Shelley's report with her revisions. Because those revisions aren't going to change the way the project is. Is that correct, Shelley?
Yeah. And I guess what I would say is, I don't have a final document for you right now because what I did this afternoon, when I had a chance after I received, you know, their changes was I went through and I kind of underlined, okay, this needs to change, this needs to change. But I haven't actually made the changes yet. So I can't really send it to you right now in real time differently than how it was sent out the end of last week, which is in your packets.
So we could make that a condition of this permit, that those be filled in and done.
Yeah. I mean, you could actually, and I know this might be a little strange. So there's two way, maybe two ways for it. One would be for the board to take a little time together to go through and say, okay, you know, we're going to change where it says Dosty Drive to Elm Street. Or, you know, here where it says how many acres of wetland, we're going to change that. Or the board could make a motion or an individual could make a motion to accept the findings of fact and conditions, conclusions of law with the conditions of approval, subject to changes related to the road routing, the wetland filling, and additional information that was provided this evening, which would be subject to AVCO edit and chairman review. I mean, something like that I think could work. There are communities who I will tell you would actually go through this right now with me and would certainly go through the conclusions of law because those are decisions the board is making. You know, like, will there be pollution? I've said what I think, but it is, it's the board's document. So that's up for, up to the board to, to kind of discuss. If you've all had a chance to review it and, and you're satisfied, then maybe that's something that you want to state.
I like her last thing where we go through and cross out last thing we put in Elm Street and we make the changes as we go.
I don't know if we have. I don't know that we have time to do that. Does she, well, you want to do them now? Right now?
That's what she said. She said she would do it with us right now.
Some boards would do that. That's up to you.
What's the consensus? Tonight? Tonight?
Well, if you're going to have this thing move along, like I said, you're going to get, do it or not, get going with it.
All right. Let's do it, Shelley.
Okay, let's do it. So I, I'm hoping everybody brought their packets because it sounds like it wasn't printed twice. It was only printed and mailed to you.
So.
Was it in, was it in this that you gave us tonight? No.
Do you want me, that's what, the entire packet, Shelley, today? You want me to print that entire packet off?
No, I'm referring to, and let me just count, it's an eight page, a nine page document called Draft for Board Consideration Findings of Fact and Conclusions of Law.
The one that was attached to Gil's? No. It's your document, yes?
I sent it to you on Thursday night last week. Was it Thursday night or Thursday morning, Fri, Wednesday night? I, sorry.
What do you have there?
That, this is the one from the last meeting.
So we can go, we can use last meetings because you haven't updated.
I did revise it on six, three. So at the top it says prepared five, 12 and revised six, three. Oh, can you put that closer? That's, that looks right. It's, can you turn it and look at it yourself, Alan, and see if it says revised six, three on the second sentence line? That's the one then. Gil, I may need a little assistance from you if you're able. I know there was a change to the number of solar panels. I think it was 13,000 something and I have 14 on here. Maybe you could chase that up. I can't remember where I saw it on the drawings.
Yep.
I think that was the only thing that I, I didn't see in the information your engineer had sent for numbers.
Yeah, it is on the 13,692 solar panels.
13, 6, 9, 2?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So with the longer road, we had to decrease the footprint of the site to stay under the threshold for site law. Hence the reduction.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was wondering if you were heading that. It's a lot of road.
Mm-hmm.
You've got over two acres of road.
Will the placement remain the same? Just the reduction in the amount of panels?
The location's the same. Yeah. Yep. They just, we just reduced some of the panels to decrease the footprint.
Hey Gil, how big are those panels and how much wattage per panel?
Oh, Aaron could answer that question better than I could.
Yeah, they're, they're going to be 400 watt panels. And they're, they're generally about six, six feet by, by three feet. I believe. I can give you the exact dimensions.
Oh, I don't need the exact. That's fine. It's like a standard panel that's put on the house.
Cor, correct. Yes.
How's the supply been on those?
The market's actually really good right now from a development standpoint. There's been a lot of projects in both the residential and, and large utility scale sectors that have been put on hold because of COVID. Obviously, like, nobody wants anybody around their house and installing panels. And then on the utility side, you know, a lot of the permitting is, is state permitting and, and federal permitting. And those organizations have been not as conducive as, as smaller, you know, municipals. And so what that's led to is a, you know, a glut of panels in the marketplace. And so we've actually seen a fairly good decrease in the cost of panels. For context, they went from like 36 cents in February to down to 33 cents per watt for a panel. So, you know, almost a, an eight percent reduction in four months.
It is pretty amazing. Oh, Gil, construction time, once you get all your permits, what do you think?
We have an eight month timeframe in the schedule.
Just to provide some context on that, you know, the, probably the easiest part of, of, of this entire process is, is actually putting the panels in the ground. You can usually put in around 200, 200 kilowatts a week. And so, you know, that's with one crew and we'll, we'll probably have two, two, two labor forces out there. And so that, that means that we can put out 400 watts and, sorry, sorry, 400 kilowatts in, in a week, which leads to, you know, approximately like a 12 week onsite schedule. And then the remaining is just testing and, and, you know, some, some of the utility work that needs to be done.
Oh, it's good information to know.
We were trying to get this done before, uh, before the winter.
Okay. I saw Alan come in. Does that mean everyone has a copy now?
One more.
One more.
Okay. All right.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. So the findings of fact, just for the board's information, this part of the document is essentially a who, what, when, where facts about the project. So the first thing I would propose changing is in that first paragraph, halfway down, it talks about the number of solar panels. And so right now it's 14,031 ground mounted solar panels. The new drawings we received today are 13,692 panels. So we would make that change there. That's the only change I would make to the first paragraph. The second paragraph talks a bit more, we start talking about access roads. So the, the second half of the first sentence says a second access off of Dosty Drive off of Elm Street will access the eastern group of solar panels. So instead we could say a second access off of Elm Street will access the eastern group of solar panels. I think the rest of that sentence or that paragraph would be fine. The third paragraph, the first sentence talks about frontage for Route 11 and the lot there. Then we, we move to the second sentence where we say in order to access the easternmost area of solar panels accessed from. And then we would change that to Elm Street and we would eliminate dead end and we would just say Elm Street, a town road will be over map eight, lot 11 and lot 11 dash three. Well, actually, I'm sorry. There's three lots. So it's map eight, but then it's lot eight, lot 11 and lot 11 dash three. There's a sentence after that in italics, which I would eliminate, which was just me asking some questions, which we've had clarification on because we have the new drawings that clarify where the road is going to be placed. The next portion of that paragraph talks about zoning districts. And so there would be really no. And so there would be really no change to that. What I would add, because the first sentence talked about how much frontage we had on Route eleven, is I would add a sentence that says parcel, and it's eleven dash three, I believe that we're coming off of, has two hundred and eighty-nine feet of frontage on Elm Street. So I would add that sentence to that paragraph.
What was the footage, Shelley?
Two hundred and eighty-nine feet. Before I move forward, is the board okay so far? Okay, great. Then I start to talk about natural resources, um, the stream, the floodplain and wetlands that bisected lot number two.
I thought you said it had a development in, uh, um, shoreline zone overlay. It says it has no development in it.
Right.
But it does.
You think it does?
No, I thought you said it did and one of the things that you hadn't.
No, I think you're remembering the floodplain. So, um, at our prior meeting, there was a change to the drawings where the applicant had originally shown, uh, uh, panels in the floodplain. And they have now since moved and consolidated that eastern area. So it's outside of the floodplain and well outside of the shoreline zoning, um, uh, stream protection zone in there. Okay, so then, um, I would change, there's a sentence here that says the access will only traverse, i- it starts to describe how the road is being routed. And so I would change that. So I would instead say the access will traverse eleven dash three, then lot eleven and finally lot eight before reaching the solar array on lot two. Um, so there's a number of words I would remove out of there. Then the next sentence talks about, uh, clearing approximately eleven acres, um, which is okay. But then the wetland filling of zero point three, zero four acres, uh, we would change that to zero point five eight seven acres of wetland. And then, creation of, instead of five thousand linear feet of new gravel access road. There was, um, Gil, maybe you can pull up for yourself and you can explain this to me because I, I had a chance to briefly look at it. But the document that your engineer or assistant had prepared, the bottom of the first page, it says that it would create an additional four thousand, three hundred ninety-five new and existing access, sorry, linear feet of new gravel road. But then the overall project, there's a creation of six thousand, four hundred ninety-five linear feet of new gravel roads. So it wasn't really clear. It sounded like those two descriptions were the same, but the numbers were different. Maybe you can parse that out for me. I think the six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five is probably the com- combination of all the gravel roads on site, the ones coming off of eleven, Route eleven.
Right.
That's, that's what it is.
Okay.
I just.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, um, we had some email traffic on that, that one today, actually, that question today. So I was just, sorry about that. My, apparently my dog wants to comment.
Are all the gravel access roads being used for this project new? Or are there still some existing road that's being incorporated into the?
No, new, all new.
All new, okay. So a total of, so really, there's no existing. It's just six thousand, four hundred ninety-two, five feet of new gravel road.
Correct, yep.
Okay. All right, sorry, sorry, board. So jumping back into that sentence and the creation of a pox, approximately five thousand linear feet of new gravel access road, we would change that to six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five feet. And then I think the rest of that paragraph is fine.
It says that the stumps will be left in place, but he said that they won't be, that they'll be pulled up and ground or taken off site.
No, he didn't say anything about grinding and taking them off. He said grinding them and using for a silt barrier.
As I said, he said, or.
So they leaving, just staying on the same property.
He said, or removing them if they don't grind them up.
I didn't hear removal.
So if I could interject, and maybe Gil, you're the better person, but the way this is worded, where regrading is not necessary in order to place the panels, stumps will be left in place. So where the grade is relatively gentle, they won't do soil disturbance. But there will be quite a bit of the land where they will have to regrade the land. And in those cases, they have to pull the stumps. So they would be removing stumps. And it sounds like grinding on site, um, when they are removing some skill. Maybe you can clarify. He may be with the barking dog at the moment.
Oh, no, he stopped barking, actually. I'm sorry, I, I did mute it. No, I just didn't want to give this, this, uh, you know, carte blanche statement that all of the stumps will be ground. And, and I'm sure you've all seen this where stumps are, you know, getting hauled off of subdivision or something like that. You know, the ideal scenario is to indeed use that as erosion control mix. And I mentioned earlier, the DEP, that's what they prefer. Silk fence is rather cumbersome to work with and, you know, a lot of people don't pull it out. Although I'm, I'm not saying we're not going to pull it out. But, um, you know, once so fence gets established and the grass grows around it, then, you know, it's, it's rather cumbersome removing it. So the ideal is to grind those stumps, use them as a erosion control berm or barrier. And, um, and on all those stumps would remain, you know, on the property, on the project.
Would it be fair to make a statement like, "Where possible, ground stumps will be used for erosion control mix on site?"
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
Um, so board, I'm thinking we would add that statement to the end of that paragraph after we talk about revegetating meadow. How do folks feel about that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Moving on. Uh, then there's just a minor change at the top of page two, um, taking the word Dusty Drive and, and, you know, making it Elm Street. The next paragraph, uh, talks about what information the board has received. So we have a number of dates here for, um, times when verbal information was received in person at meetings or materials were submitted. What I would do is, um, there is a sentence there, uh, that says revised drawings with new road alignment was provided on May twenty-ninth. I would add a sentence after that that says, "An agreement with Walter Goss and revised drawings were provided on June eighth, twenty twenty."
Yeah, this seems to be an eleven.
The next page, I don't know why it prints that. You've got another page, the next one should be two. Okay. Page at the bottom.
Sorry, did I say July? I've written here June, but my brain must be jumping ahead. And then there's a number of date of, uh, information here where we would also add the public hearing on May eighteenth. I would also add, um, tonight's date of June eighth. And then there's a number of other insert date for when, if, you know, if the board votes to find the application complete, what the date is for that. Um, and then the date when the board votes to approve, deny, approve with conditions, the site plan, as well as the same thing for the conditional use permit. Then we get to the conclusions of law. So before I start there, any questions about what we've done so far? Okay, great. So the conclusions of law, this is where you take the actual review criteria, what your ordinance says the board has to use as its criteria for making its decision. And, um, we look at them kind of one at a time. And the board determines whether it believes that the standard set out by the ordinance has been met. So I don't know as it's necessary that board members have the ordinance in front of them and are going through this. I think most of these, as you read it, you'll understand what, what it is that the ordinance, um, is trying to go for. So, um, the first, uh, criteria has to do with aesthetic, cultural and natural values. And so it's looking for whether there are historic sites that are known on site, significant habitats, natural areas, you know, scenic views that maybe were determined in your comprehensive plan or something like that. So I've prepared a statement here about, um, what the applicant is doing, uh, to help preserve the attractiveness of, uh, of the location. So they have set the project back three hundred feet from Route eleven. As we know, it's set back a long ways from Elm Street, so I don't even mention that. There's a seven-foot-high chain link fence, uh, to secure the site, but also potentially it sounds like that, that won't even be viewed, um, based on what the owner has stated about the lay of the land. And they are, have, you know, will be making it green in color to help it blend in a little bit better along Route eleven. Then I've also stated that there's no known, those same things, the historic sites, significant wildlife habitats, based on kind of how the state defines those. I do have a sentence here that we needed additional information for lot eleven, A, or sorry, eleven, three, dash three, because that hadn't been provided. But the owner, or I'm sorry, um, the applicant has prepared that and provided that today. So I would just eliminate that sentence because it sounds like there's nothing with the additional property that would be a red flag. And then I've just stated that the board found that standard to be met. Would the board like to interrupt me if they have differing opinions or discussion? Or do you want me to pause kind of at the end of each one?
We'll interrupt you if you, we have some.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, uh, so moving on to number two, um, conforming with local ordinances and plans. So this is just looking to make sure that the development, um, isn't at odds with the comprehensive plan or any other guiding documents that the town has developed for how, um, the community wants to see that the town, uh, takes shape in the future. So I mentioned here that the, uh, application is being, how it's being reviewed, what use it was categorized as, which is natural resources-based industries, that that's allowed, um, in that zone. Uh, and that it appears to be in harmony, being in the rural district. I quote some of the description of what the rural district is meant to be, um, and that this appears to fit within, uh, those, uh, goals. Item number three is erosion. So the project does involve the clearing of eleven acres of trees, um, which is significant. I do have a note here, updated numbers with new entrance off Dusty Drive. It sounds like from what I've seen from the engineers, that there isn't a significant difference in the tree clearing quantities from the prior design to what's proposed today. Gil, can you just confirm that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I would just take out the brackets there, board, that you see updated numbers with new entrance off Dusty Drive, and we'll just cross that out. So it's, uh, involved clearing of just over eleven acres of trees. Then I do mention stump removals. Let's just see if there's any changes here. Stump removal and grading will take place for the access roads and we're reducing the pitch of the land as necessary for the solar ray. Okay, I think that that's probably okay the way it's written. So the rest of this is just describing how the applicant is, is planning to mitigate erosion potential on site with, uh, mulching. There's erosion control blanket that they're going to be placing at the drip edge under each solar panel. So the concentrated flow from the panel will have, um, you know, greater dispersion at the bottom and, and will, uh, have, um, erosive force. Then I do mention that the applicant hasn't submitted, uh, an actual grading plan. And I have a condition of approval here that is suggested related to a final erosion control plan being provided to the planning board for a review prior to the start of construction. And then based on that condition, I'm stating that the board finds that the standard will be met. Item four, financial burden on the town. Here I talk about the standard things that, uh, you know, would be a burden, schools, water, sewer, emergency services and so forth. It's anticipated emergency services would have limited response, given the lack of water, um, available. And, uh, I do note where in the ordinance, um, the, the town has the ability to request or require the performance guarantee. And so then we have a couple of conditions of approval here. Uh, the first one has to do with the construction, um, bond. And then the second one with the removal bond at the end of the life cycle of the project, um, which in both cases would really be only a last resort, where, you know, the, for some reason, the applicant has walked away. And the only way to, um, secure, make safe or return the site to a play, a way that it could be reused would be for the town to be involved financially. Then I mention the new gravel roads and state that they are not intended to be town roads, that they are private. And then have a condition of approval that they remain private and not become town roads and require no town maintenance. Then we have a condition of approval here that mentions Dusty Drive. So I would, uh, change that to say Elm Street shall be returned to equal or improved condition at the conclusion of construction by the applicant. Moving on to item five, financial and technical ability. The first item is financial capacity. And so I do talk about, um, the capacity of the developer's partner, um, who intends to purchase the project from them, to, you know, their, their financial situation. And then talk technical ability, uh, the, certainly years of experience that the applicant and their partner have. And then the consultants that they hire, um, as well as, I don't mention the, the contractor. Oh, I just say an experienced solar installation contractor. I don't know specifically who they're going to use, but they do have, um, do have some folks they typically work with, so. Then moving on to flood areas, which is item number six, uh, there are floodplains, um, on the project site. But I have adjusted this to say that, uh, development will not be taking place in the floodplain because that, um, was changed last time. So, um, there's no effect to floodplains. Item number seven, freshwater wetlands. This is where we would potentially have a change. So the engineering firm has mapped the wetlands on site and the, and the applicant has worked to reduce the impacts to the wetlands. But the second sentence, instead of saying two areas, because we have more than two areas now, I would just start it with saying wetland filling totaling approximately. And then we'll change that number, um, to zero point five eight seven, like we did in the findings of acres, um, is proposed. And we would just eliminate in the, in the west array. So is proposed. Well, we could be more specific. Sorry, board. We could say is proposed in the west array area and for the access road to the east array. So we could keep that as the language if that works for the board. So we're being specific as to generally where it is. Then I mentioned that the applicant has provided two permits, one from Army Corps and one from Maine DEP for this filling. But then I would add a sentence after it that says, these were received with a prior design and lesser fill quantity, and will need to be reevaluated by both agencies. So that's how I would propose changing that section to include the additional wetland fill for the new road alignments. Item eight, groundwater. This project is.
Yes, repeat that, what you just said that we should add there.
The added sentence.
Yep, absolutely. So what I would add at the end of that, so I have the sentence about the permits from DEP and US Army Corps of Engineers, I would then say, these were received with a prior design and lesser fill quantity and will need to be reevaluated by both agencies. I don't know whether the change would actually change anything to their permits, but the agencies should be notified and allowed to provide additional assurance to the town that their permits are satisfactory. So number eight, groundwater. This is not in the town's aquifer management area. The project does not involve liquid chemicals. There's no, I don't mention this, but there's no storage of chemicals on site. So it's not anticipated to have effect on the, either the quality or the quantity of groundwater. Number nine, municipal solid waste disposal. So I state that this is expected to generate minimal waste during operations, that the primary waste would be during construction. And then during the decommissioning at the end of the life cycle of the project. The applicant has provided to me and Alan, I don't know if those were widely distributed to the board, but cut sheets of from the manufacturer of the two different companies that they typically use panels from. And those panels don't have cadmium and don't have any, anything toxic, so they actually could be put in a regular landfill. However, the applicant is committed to recycling and has a company in Massachusetts they work with who does solar panel recycling. So it's anticipated that the panels themselves, if some malfunction or break during installation or at a later date, would be taken offsite for recycling. But the applicant is contracting with a local, you know, unnamed so far, but will contract with a local company, as we discussed earlier this evening, for construction waste hauling offsite.
And those cut sheets were provided in your last packet for last, our last meeting that I emailed out.
Municipal wastewater supply, there's no proposed water for this project, so there's no burden to the municipal supply anticipated. Number 11, neighboring neighborhood compatibility. I quote here the purpose of the rural district, which, you know, is low-density residential, commercial and forestry agricultural uses compatible with rural qualities. So this appears to be a consistent type of project. I mentioned the 300-foot setback from Route 11. And some of the concern, I think, with neighborhood compatibility is that you would have consistent architectural massing, so you wouldn't have a lot of small houses and then some big towering building as an example of something that would be incompatible. So I mentioned that this does not change the typical bulk and height of buildings in the neighborhood, the panels. And this is something I would change based on conversation I've had subsequent with the applicant. They state that the panels would be about eight feet high when mounted. It sounds like they might be closer to six. So I might say six to seven feet high. Then I mentioned the buffer with residences on Timber Lane that has been designed into this project. And I have a paragraph at the end here that starts to talk about construction traffic, and I would eliminate this paragraph from this section. Some of it had to do with questions that were discussed this evening, but I think they would be more appropriate to discuss in the traffic section. At that time, I was concerned with Dusty Drive being a residential dead-end street, and now that that's not being used anymore, I think that that issue is no longer really important to talk about in this section. So. Number 12, pollution. Since the project doesn't have subsurface wastewater treatment needs, and, you know, don't know of any hazardous materials being used. And it doesn't appear to me that there would be pollution being generated. Number 13, River Brook and Stream. The stream is located on the designs that the engineer provided. There's no construction being done in the stream or in its vicinity within the shoreline zone overlay or within the floodplain. Number 14, sewage disposal. This project does not have any sewage disposal needs. There will be portable toilets used on site during construction. A local company will be hired to provide and maintain the toilets. 15, stormwater. This project. Yes.
What about during the project existence? Is there going to be anybody on site or there could be something that's planned for that? Or, I don't know, maybe Gary is speak better to you, whether they're going to have porta potties on site when they're doing servicing for the panel?
That's a good question. My understanding was that, you know, it would be infrequent that someone would be coming, like they would mow the lawn twice a year or mow the meadow essentially once or twice a year. And then come and do safety checks, or if they get, I think there's a system where they know if panels need servicing. So Gil, maybe you can address, you know, whether we just have a guy peeing in the meadow. Or whether the porta potties will be staying on site.
Oh. Yeah, well, I don't know if I want to admit that they'll be peeing in the meadow, but there wouldn't be any porta potties on site.
There won't be anyone around who can, who'll be watching, so I think it's. Maybe they do.
Yeah, I think they have a screening process that the people they hire have ability to hold it till they finish their work, so.
I'd been a reset.
Well, you certainly couldn't hire me for that job. I'll just say. Does the board have anything they want to add to that section or change?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Item number 15, stormwater. I do mention that the, there is a significant amount of trees being removed, 11 acres, which will increase the speed of the water runoff significantly. Maine DEP does not consider solar panels to be impervious because they don't have a footprint on the land. You still have the same amount of ground. The added gravel roads, however, are considered impervious. So as far as Maine DEP goes, there would need to be stormwater treatment for that additional impervious surface. The applicant has not provided those final designs. This is part of what they've asked to provide at a later date. So I have a couple of conditions of approval I've suggested. The first one is a condition we've seen before, and you may see again in here, final erosion control grading and stormwater management design shall be submitted to the planning board for review prior to the start of construction. Then a requirement here that no stormwater would adversely affect neighboring properties. And then finally, that all required permits and approvals from other agencies. Revisions to those permits receive subsequent to this approval. So for example, the wetland filling permits would be an example where there might be changes that after this, after tonight. And any town permits would be received prior to the start of construction. Moving on to number 16, sufficient water. This project does not have any water usage needs. 17, traffic. The project has no occupancy as it's a solar production field. Personnel will be on site for periodic maintenance, but traffic generation, you know, will be quite small. The board may want to add something here about construction traffic. Certainly, it sounds like Gil, will there be parking on Route 11 during construction? I mean, they're set back 300 feet now, so it seems like all the parking will be on site and off-road for both entrances to this project.
Correct. Yeah, they wouldn't park on the road.
So maybe we want to make a note here. We could add a sentence that says, construction parking will be on site and not located on Route 11 or Elm Street. Sorry, I meant construction parking. I don't know if I said traffic or parking.
Part of that 300-foot setback will be used for staging. That's why we opted to leave that open for the staging of, you know, the logging trucks where they're going to, you know, they're going to log all their trucks to a yard, and that's where they'll be loading their trucks right there, so that when they reach Route 11, the only thing they have to do is maybe possibly if they have a heavy day or something like that, maybe a flagger out there that would indicate a safe exit. But that would be the only thing. No, no vehicles out or move 11 at all.
Perfect, okay. Then we have a paragraph that states that access on Route 11, if it was new, would require a DOT entrance permit. Since it's existing and has a permit, we're just asking the applicant to verify to make sure that's still valid. And then the.
I'll give you a copy of it.
Okay, I, the only reason I'm suggesting that is I've heard that permits are good for 10 years. So I don't know if, since it's existing and contracted, it's fine and all set, or if they want to review it again, so.
When we installed the culvert, that was the that was the emancipation of the permit, was installation of the culvert. And they basically said that that was now an approved entrance and exit. I could have an industrial park in there if I wanted to.
Okay. Does the board want to require just correspondence with DOT about this, or is the board satisfied?
I'll bring Alan a copy of the permit.
Just a copy over here would be fine.
Okay, great. So I'll adjust that to say the access onto Route 11 has an MDOT driveway entrance permit, which will be provided to the town. Then I just have a sentence, the second access will be over town road, and we'll change that to Elm Street. And will involve a new driveway off this road, therefore, a town driveway permit will be required. And then here I just have a condition of approval that all permits that are required will be provided to the town. And then final road layout and a copy of the access agreement and easements for the access from Dusty Drive shall be provided prior to the start of construction. We do have a road layout today. It sounds like the applicant, owner and engineer all hope that it's the final one. So it may be that we can remove this suggested condition of approval. What does the board think?
I think we leave it as many times as it's changed. Until you've got that final copy of the road.
It certainly doesn't hurt to leave it if the board wants to, because if no change happens, then they don't have to submit something to the board.
And shouldn't Dusty Road be crossed out and Elm Street be put in there?
Yes, so we'll make that change. And then a copy of the access agreement and easements. I think those were provided today, so we can get rid of that. So final road layout shall be provided prior to the start of construction. Does that sound okay?
It sounds good.
Okay, great. Number 18, fire protection. You know, I've stated that fire protection is probably limited due to the lack of onsite water.
We do have a hydrant, we do have a hydrant right across Route 11. Yes, it's exactly right across the street from the DOT entrance permit. There is a hydrant right there.
Oh, good to know. Okay. Does anyone know how far the fire vehicles and hoses reach? Because we're talking 300 feet before they even get to the project site. Well, maybe a little more if they're going across the road, maybe 350 feet.
They could probably pump out of the brook as well.
Yeah.
Waterhouse brook.
Okay.
I would think this site, the only thing that could possibly turn would be electrical main house where all the transfers can take.
Yeah, I think so. I'm almost more thinking about if like a brush fire were to get started or something. I don't know.
Yeah, but you still have a brush fire out there.
They're going to have better access. They're going to have a road to get in there.
Exactly.
Plus, we have the old railroad bed too, that access right halfway.
All kinds of access.
Okay, I'm just writing a few things. So I'm just adjusting that sentence to say, this project has limited fire protection needs. A fire hydrant is located on Route 11 near the site. How does that sound to the board? Then I refer to security a little bit. Well, this doesn't really talk about it. I didn't know really where else to put it, so I mentioned that they're encased in the the secure fencing with locked gates. And that the fire department would have access through Knox boxes to the project site. Conditions of approval, then we have that the Knox box would be installed at each solar right entrance. And a copy of the site plan and emergency shutdown procedures would be provided to the town's emergency services responders prior to the start of construction. It sounds like the new drawings do notate the Knox boxes on them, so I don't know if the board wants to keep this in. And I don't know, actually, sorry. Does the board typically require your conditions of approval to be on approved plans, like to actually be printed on the plan?
This is the second major project. This is the second major project that's come through here in the last four years. Last one, engineering staff did a wonderful job preventing, you know, presenting.
And they included all of that on the print that they gave us.
Okay, so would the board, would that be the board's preference then with this project as well? That any, if you do approve it, that any conditions of approval be put on the, the final drawing set that you would be stamping, signing?
I, I think it wouldn't be bad to have the location of it to, just for future reference, say 20 years from now. I don't think I'm going to be here. Probably a lot of the staff here won't be here, but the print will be, hopefully still be here. And they can use that as a learning tool.
Yeah, I mean, it's also helpful to the board come fall. Let's say if this project does move forward and you're getting a revised drawing set to be able to just easily look back and see what the, what the conditions were. So. Okay, so we could leave that in there because they'll be revising those conditions they're showing, I think, based on this. So that was the last standard was the fire protection. Then we've got, I've written a couple of paragraphs here about the request that the applicant has made in that it's not probably standard for your board to approve something that you're still waiting on final designs for some of the aspects. And not wanting that to seem like it's a precedent. So to say due to the unique competitive nature of the state program regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, the nature of which does not guarantee the project will be selected by the state. The planning board has provided some unusual provisions for the applicant to provide certain submittals and design information closer to construction as outlined in the conclusions of law above and in the conditions below. So then we have the board potentially approving or approving with the following conditions. And so we have those listed. They were stated in each of those criteria for review. And we can look at those really briefly. The first two deal with making sure that what was submitted is accurate. And that if there are any changes that the board would have the opportunity to determine if, if they need to see those changes. Item three, that the final erosion control grading and stormwater designs come to the planning board for review prior to start of construction. Financial assurance bonds for, is item four, and then decommissioning bond is item five. Item six is that all the drives that are being developed would be private and stay private and not require town maintenance. Item seven will be changing. So instead of Dusty Drive, it's that Elm Street would be returned to equal or improved condition at the end of construction. So there's no construction damage that the town would be responsible for paying for. Yes.
With, with Route 11 where that's a state road. We don't need to worry about having that covered in there the way we do Elm Street.
It's a good question. Yeah, it wouldn't hurt. Why, I, I think putting it there certainly wouldn't hurt. I'm sure the state would appreciate it. I think probably the construction traffic they're planning on is unlikely. There's a lot of construct, you know, a lot of use on Route 11, but. Would the board like me to add Route 11 to that?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Why not? It would cost me extra, right?
Yes, please.
So Route 11 and Elm Street shall be returned to equal or improved condition. Number eight, that the stormwater would not adversely affect neighboring properties. Item number nine, we'll have a few changes based on what we already talked about. So final road layout shall be provided prior to the start of construction. So we'll remove the and a copy of the access agreement and easements for access from Dusty. So just be found road layout shall be provided prior to start of construction. Final construction drawings bearing the name, resonate, sorry, registration numbers and seal of the land surveyor and the engineer will be provided to the town prior to the start of construction. So essentially their drawings that they're submitting to, to the board in the future would need to be stamped and signed. That a Knox box would be installed at each solar array entrance. And the copy of the site plan and emergency shutdown procedures provided to emergency services. And that all required permits and approvals from other agencies, any revisions to permits that they receive and any town permits that are necessary would be provided to the town prior to the start of construction. That's all I have for you.
Good job, Shelley.
Where do we go from here?
Well, we.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Think we've got everything we need to get.
We have everything right here in this, but shall we just put through?
Yep.
Okay.
If we can approve this as Shelley has possibly revised it.
Yeah.
And it will probably come through tomorrow on being printed so that we can be able to find it in the fact and everything that is needed. I'll introduce Dana.
Go ahead, Paula, you go to make a motion.
I make a motion that we accept this application and the finding of facts and the conditions as set forth by Shelley from AvCog on our behalf.
And amended by Shelley.
Yeah, with those revisions tonight.
On our behalf. With all of the conditions set herein to be met prior to permits by the town being given for construction.
For what?
For solar grid. Solar project.
Perfect.
I hear a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion amongst the board?
Paula Bolduc still out there, just, just checking in. Paula, can you unmute and let us know if you're still here? May not be on.
No discussion by the board, any discussions by the other side of the public? Not hearing any. Motion has been made and seconded and people take both. Julie, could you do a roll call?
Yes.
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 She signed in, but I don't know if she's still here. I thought she was here. Excellent.
Congratulations. You're good to go.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, appreciate it.
So I will provide the corrected version to the town tomorrow. I just want to verify that all the members of the board who voted would be the people signing it. Or how do you want to handle that? What should I be putting on that last page for signatories?
Well, you should change the chair to Lou Galley and. You want everyone that's here or everyone completely?
Everyone that's here that voted on.
Just those that present.
Okay, so I just need to add Lou Anance. Okay, yep. So I'm taking off Paula Bolduc, adding Lou Anance, Lou Galley as the chair. And then the board, I think, will need to coordinate with the town as far as getting this signed. So that it can be given to the applicant before the 11th, so they can upload it to the state website. So just to remind folks that that will need to happen.
Would it be easier just the chair sign?
It could be. It depends on the board's schedule.
If I'm available, we can find this at any time.
Can you just put the chair on a chair line? That's it?
I can absolutely do it that way. That's if the board would like it that way.
I have no problem with it.
I have no problem.
There you go.
Okay, that'll certainly streamline things. So we'll just have Lou Galley Chair signing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, Shelley.
You're very welcome.
Nice.
Thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome. Good to work with you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.